At six o'clock. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, unmered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lance. Let the record reflect that all council members are present except for Vice Mayor Walter with an excused absence, Councilmember Cruz who may be joining us later.
Thank you, sir. Any conflicts of interest? Seeing none, agenda review, any changes or deletions?
Mayor, members of council, there are no proposed changes or additions, deletions to the agenda this evening.
I am saying the same thing, it took me a second. Okay, moving on to B, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Per City Council policy, three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. If anyone in our audience live that would like to make a public comment?
Mayor Lance, it looks like no one online is raising their hands at this time.
Thank you, sir. No one in the audience and no one online, we will move on. And let the record show at 6:02, Councilmember Cruz is now present. If you need a couple of minutes? Great, thank you. All right, moving forward to C, Proclamations and Presentations. First one, C1, Student Liaison Report.
Thank you, Mayor Lance. All right, so on May 31st, seniors had their graduation walk down Cloverdale Boulevard and through the halls of Jefferson Elementary School as well as Washington Middle School. June 1st was the awards banquet for all spring athletes. Students were recognized for the athletic accomplishments of the spring semester. Congratulations Eagles. And the following day, June 2nd, was awards night for seniors. This is a night when seniors receive scholarships, cords, and more awards, all as a result of the work that they have done throughout their high school careers. Graduation is this Friday, starting at 6:00 PM on the field. All are welcome. It is first come, first served. And today, we received the results of our ASB and class elections. There was a rally held on Friday where students gave speeches to their peers, and on Monday, everybody voted. Yesterday, we received the votes, and then today, class officers met and are excited to begin planning for next year's festivities such as roundup before the school year begins, homecoming, spirit weeks, and much more. And lastly, tomorrow is our final day of the 2021 to 2022 school year, and we are extremely excited about it. We were able to remain in person for an entire year and are so glad to have been able to come back in person. It was an amazing school year despite everything we had to face along the way. And for those of us who will be returning next year, we are enthusiastic to see what will be in store for us. And that concludes my final report.
All right, well, thank you, and I'm sorry to hear that this is your final. You know that we need another rep for next year, too, so...
Maybe it might not be my final.
Scholarships are great. Scholarships are great. The money pays. All right, moving on to C2, Certificate of Appreciation. Student Liaison, Guadalupe Nunez. Okay, the Cloverdale City Council and Joint City Cloverdale Unified School District Subcommittee recognizes you for the time and commitment you dedicated to serving on the Cloverdale City Council in the student city council liaison position and participating in two city council meetings per month for the 2021-2022 school year. Thank you for your hard work providing a voice for our local youth and enhancing student participation in local government. I've been here for a year and a half. I've seen three student liaisons at this point, and you did the work of two. And you didn't even know it. You were bright, you were brilliant, you were prepared, you were well spoken, and your ideas and your comments and questions were very pertinent to any discussion we had. And I can't thank you enough for the job you did, and I will support you in anything you ever need recommendations for, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you as well. I've had the opportunity to be on the City Council for over 12 years, and we've started this program several years back. We've had two different liaisons each month, attending either the first or the second meeting, and I got to say, it's been an excellent program, and you have just made it even better. I mean, it's been excellent, and thank you for all your hard work, the reports, and we do need preferably two for next year, so put the word out. Thank you.
I just want to thank you, Guadalupe. You just are such a bright and shining light. You are such a good student and a wonderful representation of Cloverdale High School and Cloverdale, the community. So thank you for all your hard work, and I hope that this sets you up for a lifetime of civic engagement, and thanks for your service.
Guadalupe, thank you very much for your commitment, for your seriousness, and for always being on top of the game. I thank you for letting our city manager and myself know when you are not going to be here and submitting, still submitting, a report. So, thank you very much. That says a lot about the quality of individual that you are, and we hope that you can continue to nurture other students, especially young Latina women, in the future. And I invite you to apply for the Junior Commissioner Program with the Sonoma County Commission on the Status of Women. So, thank you again, and please recruit some quality students just like yourself to be with us in the near future.
Can we do it up here? Yes. I don't know if you can bear, please, leave it away. Okay, David, you must be good. I'll wrap this up. I've got my spotter. You know that I trust you. I was like...
I don't want my head between the legs.
Either of you, any of you would like to read this, or would you like me to? Okay, proclaiming June 2022 as a lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and alley pride month. Whereas Cloverdale's colorful LGBTQIA+ communities represent an integral part of our community and enhance our city's well-being. And whereas the LGBTQIA+ community are our neighbors, mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, friends, and allies. These individuals are vital to our community and demonstrate with pride and commitment by virtue of their contributions to our city's economy and quality of life. And whereas the LGBTQIA+ community includes elected and appointed officials, professionals, business owners, decision-makers, employees in government, as well as public and private enterprises, parents, students, homeowners, charitable organizations, and volunteers. And whereas June 22 is International Pride Month, a month that reflects upon a movement 53 years ago when a Black trans woman of color, Marsha P. Johnson, threw the first brick at the Stonewall Bar in New York, New York. The Stonewall uprising began as the fight for equality and in opposition to discriminatory laws and treatment. The Stonewall uprising continues to inspire the modern LGBTQIA+ civil rights movement. And whereas the City of Cloverdale recognizes the modern LGBTQIA+ civil rights movement started as a protest for equality. In June of 2020, those protests took on a new meaning with the Black Lives Matter movement as the city hopes that both movements will continue to lead to significant steps forward in the move towards a more equal, just, and fair society. Whereas California has been a leader in advancing the civil rights of its LGBTQIA+ citizens, and the City of Cloverdale is no different. While further progress and achievements need to be made, it is important to recognize and celebrate the immense gains and progress that the LGBTQIA+ community has made to date in our community, state, and nation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Todd Lance, Mayor of the City of Cloverdale, do hereby proclaim on behalf of the Cloverdale City Council, June 22, as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender pride month in Cloverdale, and urge all citizens to join together in ending prejudice everywhere it may exist, to respect the rights of all people, and to celebrate the diversity resulting in cultural richness within our city. Presented this day, June 8th, by myself, Todd Lance, the mayor. I would like to ask others to speak first, and then I'll...
Is there a recipient of this online?
No. So, the recipient, his name is Adam Paulson. Adam Paulson was so excited to come here and receive this, and he fell down in front of a trading post and sprained an ankle. Not today, last week, and he said there is no way that he could make it because he doesn't feel well and he's having a really tough time. However, Adam Paulson is online and he is watching, and he is very excited to receive this via proxy, and I will make sure that he gets it personally. I'll give you a little bit about Adam, and I'm going to give a little personal about Adam, and then I'll ask others to speak about anything or anyone that they would like to as well. Adam Paulson has been a resident of Cloverdale for just over a year and a half. He moved here from Santa Rosa to get a change of scenery and be closer to friends. Adam has worked in special education, the wine industry, and for the last four years in telecommunications. Theater and education has always been an important part of his life. He has served on the board of New Horizons School in Santa Rosa for the last seven years, and additionally serves on the board of Cloverdale Performing Arts Center. At the theater, Adam has been both onstage and backstage and embraces his time there. As a proud gay man, he has made sure that acceptance and equity play a key role with any organization he is a part of. He looks forward to many great years ahead in the wonderful town of Cloverdale. On a personal, I met Adam this year. I haven't known him that long. My daughters have been a part of the cabaret that goes on here in Cloverdale and is part of the Sitchess Fair. They've been doing it for about five years now, and Adam was part of it this year for the first time. And Adam was the most amazing performer, and I couldn't wait to meet him because he did such a beautiful job. And my daughters couldn't speak any higher of somebody. They were so excited, always talking about how nice and friendly and excited and just a pleasant person to be around. And it made me feel good to know that my kids were safe with somebody like Adam and that he was such a good friend to them that it made me happy to, and excited to be part of that as well and have him as a friend. So, that's what I have to say, and so I'm sorry, Adam, that you couldn't be here. I know you're watching, and so I will make sure you get this, and thank you for being part of Cloverdale. Anything they would like to say today?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was thrilled to walk to the plaza over the weekend and see the pride flag flying yet again over City Hall. It's, it means so much to everyone who believes in equality and equal protection under the law. And not just, not just those things, not just acceptance, but inclusion in this community. And I was just very happy to see the flag flying and watching all of the, watching the pride parade from Santa Rosa, and I'm just so glad that we get to, we get this month as a chance to recognize, and it's such an important integral part of our community. So, I just want to, you know, thank the council and city manager for taking the lead. Now, we, I understand, we have our own flag that we own. We didn't have to borrow it. It's our own, and we'll be flying it every year for years to come. So, thanks, thanks for your work on this, David.
I would like to start by saying that as a witness of patients of the AIDS epidemic and a caregiver of friends and family who died of AIDS, and as a child who witnessed abuse of LGBTQIA+ members of community, and as a community activist and organizer, I feel very proud to be part of a council that has been inclusive in recognizing the contributions of our fellow constituents who are part of the LGBTQIA+ community. It doesn't matter where we come from, it doesn't matter who we are, it doesn't matter what our sexual preference is or our religion. We are all children of a greater power, and we are all here to share the contributions that we can all provide to this town, this county, this state, this nation, and the world. Because we no longer have boundaries. We are the ones establishing boundaries in our personal views, and we need to continue to grow, including all of the people represented in the world. So, thank you very much for making sure that this continues in Cloverdale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, I agree with everything that was said. I don't want to repeat it, but I am happy that we got the flag worked out and that the flag was, is flying and will continue to fly this month, and I appreciate this proclamation this evening. Thank you.
And I also would like to recognize that we have a wonderful couple here who also represents the Cloverdale community. Thank you for being here, Jane, and, oh my God, Reece! I'm having a senior moment, Reece! Reece, can you, can you relate? Reece, thank you.
We are on his CPAC, and here it is, Adam. I promise you, it's here, and it will make it to you. Okay, moving on to C4, proclamation for Juneteenth. Does anyone want to read this, or would you like me to? So, if, do you want to? Okay. Give me a break.
A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale commemorating Juneteenth in the City of Cloverdale. Whereas the residents, businesses, and governmental institutions of the City of Cloverdale are firmly committed to celebrating and promoting diversity, inclusion, and cultural traditions of our city. And whereas, Juneteenth is a national celebration which commemorates the end of slavery in the United States of America. And whereas, on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas to enforce the Emancipation Proclamation signed by President Abraham Lincoln over two and a half years prior on September 22nd, 1862, and freed all remaining enslaved people in the state of Texas. And whereas, initially a regional celebration popular in Texas and neighboring states which brought remaining family members together, which had resettled after June 19th, 1865, Juneteenth grew to become a national event during which African-American communities gathered to share in the spirit of the day. And whereas, the civil rights movement spurred a resurgence of Juneteenth, leading to the state of Texas declaring it an official state holiday in 1980, and continued to grow as an important national and local celebration of African-American freedom, culture, and achievement. And whereas, Juneteenth was recognized as a federal holiday on June 17th, 2021, when President Joe Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act into law, making Juneteenth the 11th American federal holiday and the first to obtain legal observance as a federal holiday since Martin Luther King Jr. Day was designated in 1983. And whereas, the City of Cloverdale, both its council and citizens, stand with their fellow Black Americans to honor the reality of their vital importance and contributions to the evolution of our country by formally acknowledging Juneteenth, aka Black Freedom Day, and encourages all residents of the City of Cloverdale to explore African-American culture, history, and pride. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City of Cloverdale, that the City Council of the City of Cloverdale does hereby commemorate Juneteenth in Cloverdale, dated June 8th, 2022, signed by Mayor Todd Lance. So, please. Well, I tell you, Michael, I remember, right? Oh, you're Michael. And this is Arthur. Okay. All the communications were with Michael, so I assumed that you were Michael. Well, I figured. Nice to meet you, and welcome to Cloverdale. And as a descendant of African enslaved people on the islands of the Caribbean, particularly descendant of the first free slave who sailed in my hometown, I'm very proud and very happy to have read this proclamation and to make sure that our council acknowledges the contributions of all African-American people, not only in the United States, but also throughout the Americas. Thank you very much for being here, and I look forward to future events in which we can collaborate.
Thank you to the City Council. We definitely appreciate it. My colleague, Michael Miller, he talked to Mr. Kelly, and they helped spearhead this to bring this to fruition, and we are grateful. My name is Arthur Chaney, I'm the current president of the 100 Black Men of Sonoma County. We've been, this is our 32nd year in history. We found, this chapter is founded in 1990, and the original started out of New York in 1963. That era changed, it's at the heels of the civil rights movement. And everything you just read is a documentary of history, and me being not a historian, but I love history because it gives way to the understanding where we are today, and everything that you guys have done since this city has been and existed, I think it was 1872 or 78, I can't remember which one, but I know that everything you do is recorded as history, and we, as a small chapter in the national organization, we are now a part of your history, and we graciously accept that and giving us the honor of being part of your history, and we don't take it lightly, and we are very appreciative. And we, and we will look forward to working with the City of Cloverdale, whatever we can do to collaborate, to bring it closer together, make a better bond and greater bond going forward. You have, I'm here for you. I'll leave my card numbers for each of you, every one of you, and you can reach out to me 24/7. I'm happily retired now, so you can call me anytime. Thank you very much, and greatly appreciated.
Anyone else want to say anything? Councilmember Bagby?
Thank you so much for coming here with that proclamation. We were asking you more about what they kind of alluded to, some of the items that get repeated so often, which is those who don't know history are best to repeat it, and the proclamations in days like Juneteenth, where we stop and we recognize, and we share hopeless in sessions. It just, it makes sure that that history is integrated into, you know, our day-to-day lives and our consciousness so that we can break down the barriers that all, each of us, all of us have.
Absolutely. I've been here many times before. I didn't get into that story, but the hamburger place, I was telling him, we used to go and visit it all the time. When they put the bypass over, and I was going, I said, "Wait a minute, we passed it." So, we actually got off the freeway and came back. That'd be the point to go to that place, and I like the redevelopment I've seen over the years. I remember it's just a highway should run right through your town. So, yeah, that's my story. But I'll leave my card with this gentleman here, and again, thank you very much for this opportunity. Much appreciated.
Yeah, and while you're doing that, I just want to say again, I really appreciate this being on the agenda. Really glad that we can present this to you, and thank you for being here to receive it. Thank you.
It's all right, we all, we all want our turn to speak too, because we all, you know, we get so excited. I want to start by saying thank you for coming here. This holiday, the national holiday, is probably one of the best things the president has done in my lifetime, in my opinion, because it's, it's an inclusion thing that is so meant to be and so needed. We look at, like, people my age, and I think, "Oh, my gosh, you know, slavery was before I was born. It seems like it's so long away." But there's this thing going around that you see on social media that says, "Where I am now, from the 80s, is where we looked at the 1930s." So, it wasn't. It was, it's one generation. It's my, it's my parents' generation away, you know, and we don't realize, you know, those of us that never had to grow up with it, just how close it was to our lifetime and how much change and how much growth we've done in that amount of time. So, I love the fact that this is a national holiday, and it just, it makes me proud to be able to present this, and I'm so thankful to have you here, sir, so thank you.
Good. Anytime we can make a day, we can get together, and I have some other members, can we just sit down and talk about things? And we'll find that, we started a group meeting called H2H Here to Hear, and as members of the white community and us, they reached out to us, and we've been going on for a couple of years, and I said to them, "If you want to discuss racial issues and things that are going on in our lives, what you've seen or heard, you've got to put the cards straight up on the table." And it's been one of the most enlightening things across the board. Great avenue for conversation.
We have a picture with your proclamation.
Yes.
You can come up. I am a little bit, I cannot go up and downstairs, but if you could come up.
Miss Cruz, hello. Thank you very much. I appreciate your help. Check, check.
Glad it was 105 degrees.
Thank you.
I know. I know.
You stay for the fun now?
We tried hard.
Yeah, the last thing is I'm going to stand until 9:00. We've got to get back tonight. Thanks again. Have a best evening.
Thank you, sir. Good to meet you.
Thank you. That's all. Thanks, chief. That's all. 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 That's all.
Items anyone wants to poll.
Not hearing anybody. I would like to move the consent calendar.
Were you good? Was it? Okay. Perfect. We have a motion in a second.
Sorry, for the record, can you repeat the motion in a second here? I have a TV block.
Councilmember Bagby did a motion, absolutely, and councilmember Cruz was the second.
Thank you, Mayor Lance.
And with that, we'll go to the roll call vote. Starting with councilmember Paula.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Mayor Lance.
Aye. And Vice Mayor Paula is absent. I'm sorry. Sorry, Vice Mayor Paula.
Councilmember Paula is present.
It's been one of those days for everyone, I guess. Okay, E, Communications.
Mayor, members of council, I just want to note that staff did receive and council was copied on a communication from Mr. Craig Carney. The communication was in regards to water rates. I did respond to Mr. Carney. I just wanted to point that out and this is a matter that you may want to discuss under future agenda items, either for a future agenda discussion at the council level or for further reference at a future, further discussion at a subcommittee level. No further action at this point, Mayor.
Thank you, David. Okay, no public hearings, so move on to new business. G1, Policy for the Outdoor Display of Flags by the City.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So the item tonight, just to be clear, is not to consider a policy per se, but to discuss policy considerations in regards to development of a policy for the outdoors display of flags by the city of Cloverdale and to garner your direction on how you'd like city staff to proceed on next steps. For reference, the city does maintain a number of flag poles within the city. We have a flag pole prominently displayed at city hall, but we also have flag poles at the Cloverdale Police Department, the library, and city park and our wastewater treatment plant. At these locations, we do fly the US flag as well as the state flag, you know, in accordance with federal state laws and in particular the flag code. From time to time, we have received requests to fly or raise commemorative flags. Historically, we've raised the flag to bring attention to violence against children. It's very similar to the rainbow flag. And more recently, we've received a request to fly the Pride or Rainbow flag. When we've flown those two flags that were not either the state or federal flag, we've really done it in conjunction with what I would consider a public speech or government speech in the sense that those have, the flying of those flags have been related to proclamations like you did tonight, recognizing certain events. And so there has been a connection to flying those commemorative flags and in relationship to actions taken by council. But with that said, we also understand that the display of commemorative flags can take various forms and can certainly raise potential First Amendment free speech issues. And so what we're recommending tonight is that council consider whether you'd like staff to develop a formal flag policy. There are some, you know, important policy considerations around that, in particular to establish, you know, standards or procedures for the display of those flags. Of course, reflect and be consistent with applicable federal and state laws and I think, you know, it's very important that we acknowledge both our historical practices, but also our customs and our values. And we also think it's critically important to ensure that any commemorative flags are reflected as government speech versus free speech and to kind of note that difference. We recommend that any policy that is considered by the council is, again, not intended to serve as, is just freedom of expression by the public. We think there are plenty of venues for the public to convey their free speech rights, but that really, the flag pole is an opportunity to recognize government speech. So what we've included in your packet is an example of adopted policies for, you know, nearby cities, including the city of Healdsburg and the town of Windsor. Both of them are somewhat, have unique perspectives on their approaches to addressing the display of commemorative flags. In particular, Healdsburg has a kind of an approved flags list, whereas Windsor really relies on any commemorative flag being brought forward by and at the direction of council. So at this point, really what we'd like to do is just open it up for conversation with council to get, you know, one year direction. Would you like us to develop a flag policy? And if so, do you have a preference relative to the two, the two policy examples that were included in your agenda packet? And, or would you, you know, there are certainly, other cities have adopted other types of, I mean, similar flag policies. Do you further research? Is this something you'd like us to refer to subcommittee for further review and discussion or to develop a draft policy and bring it back to council? So with that said, I'd just like to turn it back to you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. And, you know, we're here to, with city attorney, answer any questions council may have about the importance of why we would like to consider a policy and why it's important to address the issues around government speech versus free speech.
Thank you, David.
Yes, please, if you want to go first, that's great.
No, no, no. I just want to, want to make sure that there's clarification in the record, that I provided, when I was mayor last year, I provided city manager David Kelly with copies of the proclamation from Windsor, not from Windsor, from Healdsburg in relationship to the Pride flag and other flag policies. I had requested that this was brought back to council, but we have been truly in an incredible amount of work and he has been totally overwhelmed. But this is a pending issue that unfortunately was brought in today and it should have been brought some time ago. And I should also indicate that this proclamation and that the flag flew last year and all of us except councilmember Paula was in council last year. So I do appreciate that it's finally going to be reviewed and it's going to become official. There was no illegality by flying the flag because it was done as explained in the report as part of a proclamation. And it's also in regards to a protected group of people by the federal government. I have also looked into other flag policies that I would like to submit to the city manager and to the council for review when allowed. And you can tell me how to provide and share this information, particularly the policy by the League of Oregon Cities, as well as the city of San Jose, the city of Terloc, and there are other cities that I did not include because they were not, what would I say, as close to us, but they refer to all the issues and all the problems that come about if there's not an established policy within jurisdictions, especially the municipalities. So with that, again, you know, I just want to make sure that it is understood that this is something that had been in the back burner and that is definitely something that has to be discussed if we are going to have a particular policy of making official the kinds of flags that are flown with the American flag.
Yeah, I just, just to kind of reiterate what councilmember Cruz was saying, there isn't an issue with flying the LGBTQIA+ flag for the city of Cloverdale because it's there, I meant, they're a federally protected class. And so, you know, there isn't, shouldn't be any controversy about it. But I think it's probably a good idea. We've talked about having a flag policy and it just kind of got lost in the wash with everything else that was, has been happening in the past year. So I'd be happy to take those, send those recommendations to a subcommittee for review so that it can come back to the council for adoption. And if I had my preference, just looking at the Healdsburg flag policy versus the town of Windsor flag policy, not to beat on Windsor, but I mean, it's a little wordy. I thought Healdsburg's was clean, straightforward, to the point. I kind of prefer that kind of language myself, so that's what, that's what I would prefer to see come back to the council for adoption.
Paula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree. I really think we do need a policy sooner than later. It needs to happen. It's not to do with one versus the other. It's just got to do with, it's got to be something that's an expression of the city and of government, once it's on a city-owned flag. So I would support moving forward as soon as possible with a policy. I think it's a good idea to put it on a subcommittee agenda. It's going to need some work. I think councilmember Cruz has about five others she named that she would like considered, as well as the Healdsburg and Windsor. I think we could find pieces that fit what we're looking for here and have the subcommittee kind of put something in a draft form or bring it back to the full council for consideration. So that's how I'd like to see it proceed. And I would like it to be a high priority. I'd like to see this thing come back within the next 30 to 60 days for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May I ask for, may I ask for Jose to also provide an explanation to the public who is not familiar with government wording on what it means to have government speech? Is that okay?
Sure. I was going to ask something along the same lines as the First Amendment and free speech versus government speech and why we are here looking for a policy and why I was so hesitant. So I was going to go, so please.
Absolutely, Mayor. So that's a good question. I know that the city manager did start presenting the issue as far as, it's also in the staff report. The difference is government speech is really the sentiment of the government, of the council making a statement that the council either agrees on or a statement from the council as opposed to open it up to the public. When you hear terms like limited public forum or public forums, when you open it up to any group, kind of just putting up flags, now it's a, now it could be seen as opening it up for a First Amendment right because it's seen as speech for anybody to put up whatever flag that goes up. Now, in order to categorize it as governmental speech or government speech, really the doctrine says that it needs to come from the council. Developing a policy is the best way to make sure that it's clear that whatever, for example, if we're talking about flags, that that's government speech. Recently, there was a case that did come out that looked at exactly this and said that policies are important in order to make sure that anybody who wants to fly flags knows, wait a minute, they have a policy, we have to follow that policy and that's government speech. They actually, the case, I believe, pointed to the San Jose policy as well, stating as, look, here's something in a policy. Now, that policy makes clear even the beginning in San Jose, the city's flag poles are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public. And then it has, the following flags may be displayed by the city as an expression of the city's official sentiments. And that's really the key there, is that the council, as the city, kind of saying, these are our sentiments, this is what we, we kind of, messages we want to put out there. You know, I know that there's been some examples, some examples got put into the packet. I know in being familiar with the Windsor example, Windsor's objective was also to make sure that they had covered other types of flags, like the POA, MIA flag, making sure that there was an example there. The issue related to displaying commemorative flags is actually pretty short on all policies that you see. It's very short and basically all of them, all the policies that I've seen, come out making the similar, similar comments about flag poles are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public. And it usually has, you know, the cities, the city shall display commemorative flags only if authorized by the council as an expression of the council's official sentiments. That's seen in all of the policies really, and it's really kind of seen as government speech. Now, what you will see and what the subcommittee will look at is, how do you get there? Now, Healdsburg has, I believe, a process where folks, groups potentially make requests and they're considered by the council. The majority of the policies that I've seen actually are council members bringing up and it's not the public coming forward and saying, here, we want this. It's the council members coming forward and the council has to agree. So it's still a council approval process. I know that your neighbors have a schedule, even Windsor, that has that, will have a, well, the easiest way to do it is potentially start off in the year or create a calendar. Here's the flags we know. And everybody agrees to that calendar. And then if other flags come up, then a council member brings it up, the council considers it and really kind of going back, is this the council's official sentiments? Is this government speech that the council says we want to promote? There are some limitations in the doctrine. Some things that you do see in several policies, there are limitations. For example, the religious preference does come up in policies because separation of church and state, right? We want to keep that separated. There's also dealing with, for example, elections, a candidate, whatever it is, elections. Cities don't spend money or resources on elections themselves and there's usually a prohibition on the election. Now, the, it's interesting, not to get too deep into it, but when you looked at the, when I looked at the San Jose policy, there was even a, flags of professional sport teams. You know, the city manager shall order the display of the flag of a professional sport team in commemoration of a significant achievement involving the city of San Jose. So there are things there that, again, but it's the government speaking, right? It's sentiments of the government. And it's just important to have a policy, that way it's clear for any other group or any group, period, that would like to fly a flag to say, do we have a policy? Yes, they do. And I know that was important in the recent legal case.
Thank you, Jose. And that was a lot of my concern when this was brought up last week, was exactly that, because I had already received an email from another group asking to fly their flag and I didn't feel it was appropriate. One of the examples I had also given was, could I fly a Todd Lance for mayor flag? I don't think that's appropriate. I think that the city hall needs to be a representation of us and our feelings towards the community or with the community. And that's it. And I don't, I don't want to have someone else have the right to bring in something that our council and our city and community doesn't support. And I worried about that. And I still worry about that until this policy is in place because it gives them that free speech versus government speech right, or at least the ability to sue for it. And it costs us a lot of money, whether we win or lose. So when this was going down, David Kelly and I discussed it all. I gave him an "out," I would call it, to make sure that we had the Pride flag flown in time and that this was here to give a short window as long as, and we know all council supported that and I appreciate that. And I appreciate it being up and I appreciate where we are right now. Now, let's discuss what me, I think personally, I think we should discuss a couple of things that we would want to see on this policy, other than just going straight to a subcommittee, personally. But if you guys want to go straight to a subcommittee, please let me know.
Give direction. I think David's already taking notes on some of the things you've said, so.
Mayor, if I may, just a quick comment on, and of course, you know, when we talk about vulnerabilities or policies, and we've looked at this and we've looked at this carefully and bringing this policy now, again, like for example, the flags that Cloverdale hasn't really flown many flags at all. I think it's two that are not the typical flags. But in both situations, like our current flag, our rainbow flag, it has been in coordination and at the same time as the proclamation by the council. And that's why it was taken by just by manager as this is the sentiments of the council. However, we would want a policy to make sure that that proclamation and let's say, flag connection is there. So that's what the policy does.
Thank you. Thank you. Who wants to start?
Yeah, you know, when you look into what is the doctrine and practice of, what is the government's speech doctrine and what is the doctrine and practice of symbolic speech, it is very clear. It says, what speech does the government restrict? And that's what we have to stick to. And it clearly states that categories of speech that are given lesser or no protection by the First Amendment and therefore may be restricted include obscenity, fraud, child pornography, speech integral to illegal conduct, speech that incites imminent lawless action, speech that violates intellectual property law, true threats, and commercial, et cetera. So this is, you know, already written by the government. So, and I'm sure that as an attorney, you've been exposed to this time and time again and that the First Amendment says that no law, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof of the freedom of speech. And then it just goes on. But it needs to be taken in terms of what are the values and what also are the communities that the federal government has stated are individuals who have suffered abuse, discrimination, and have been in the background while others have enjoyed all sorts of freedoms and opportunities. So it's, it's a sensitive issue, but the government has spoken on it. And we do say that we honor the Constitution of the United States, so.
That's my thought. Yeah, I don't think this is a, this is not something that is a big concern. I think the guardrails are already pretty strong and as Jose has already pointed out, we have only historically flown two flags, though the flag for symbolizing a stand on violence against children and the pride flag. So, but if there have been other issues in other cities, it's time to adopt a policy. The end. So I think I've been pretty clear with my instructions so far because that's what we're talking about here. Should we or should we not adopt a policy? I think we should. I think that it's going to be something that you're going to get down in the weeds on, so it's just a better place to do it, is that a subcommittee. And I'll just reiterate my preferences. I like the straightforward, simple language in the Healdsburg. If you wrote the Windsor, I didn't think about this, if I insulted your, your previous language, I apologize. If you want to throw it on another attorney, this is your chance, throw it on another attorney, that's fine, but I just like that straightforward. And also, I wouldn't be opposed to a schedule. I'd love to see us say that, you know, the month of June is, we're going to fly the pride flag. And I don't remember what, I think it's January that we, usually that we fly the violence against children flag. It's somewhere around the beginning of the, yeah, March, it's sometime a little bit earlier. So I'd be happy to, you know, go ahead and list those and leave them, leave it open for a very clear, very simple, straightforward policy that it is government speech, it's based on, you know, these criteria. And I'd like to leave some slots open so that we're not, you know, like every month is just slotted away and no, nothing new can come along that has caught our attention or is an important issue. I'd like to make sure that we have some, some months free so that, you know, some worthy causes that need attention and our support, you know, we're able to bring those to people's attention too. So that's, that's what I'd like to see. That's how I'd like to see us proceed.
Does Cloverdale fly the POW flag at all? Because it seems like every town flies it.
At the cemetery. That's where I saw it. I know, I knew we had one, but it might be at the cemetery. Is there one at the, that's hall? I don't remember. I don't think, I think it's at the cemetery and I, that was on Memorial Day, they had it flying, so. And it's likely that it's there all the time because that they've done a really shameless flag. They've done a wonderful job with the renewal of the cemetery, so, yeah.
Yeah, because when I was doing all this research, I noticed that the POW flag was flown like across the nation. And there's even some statement on this in some revision of the policy.
And I'll go to Councilmember Paula before I comment, but I would like to go a little bit on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to just piggyback on what Councilmember Bagby said. You know, I like a simple policy. I think it needs to be clear. I don't think doing it up here, I think giving direction is important, but we can give direction, our thoughts to the city manager who can bring it as part of the packet to the subcommittee who at that time could kind of work through it, look at all the five or six different policies, pick the pieces that really fit for our, our city. I like the fact that we have a list of those that are identified, but also have an opening where if a new flag or a new resolution comes out that would justify maybe considering raising the flag, that we have the ability to consider that. So the policy, and also some of these policies that the two drafts have, when it would be appropriate to lower the flag to half mast, and I think that's important to consider as well. So it gives direction to staff as well. They don't need to come to the council or anything. They know if certain things happen, the council's already adopted that policy that authorizes those flags to be flown at half mast. So I would like to encourage that we assign it to a subcommittee and let them get to work on it.
Councilmember Paula, yeah, you reminded me of an important facet of this too, is just to make sure that we, the asset we also don't have is a uniform flag policy around the US flag, and that probably should be part of the discussion as well, just to make sure that we've got our Boy Scout knots done correctly. Right, Michael? Okay.
So which subcommittee should we send it to? Admin, finance admin, police?
That's what I would suggest is police, finance, admin typically for this type of thing would be the appropriate one.
Great. Any other comments on this? Any public comments on this? Anyone? No hands on the attendees list?
Correct. No one's raising their hand at this time.
Perfect.
Hi, my name is, I go by Juan. My name is James. I got very upset when I heard about the controversy about forming a flag. I'm going to show you before we leave, I have what I believe to be the last thing to take in the March of 1997 that I took against the last parade in 1994. This is a very, very, very important issue and it's very personal. And so I think that the policy is a good idea, but with the right-wing movement in the nation, the idea of it being a controversy in the first place is what's setting us up. And I just wanted to.
Thank you, sir. This was not a right-wing movement. This was a policy to keep our count safe from litigation.
James, G I.
Okay, any other comments? Staff, anyone? Moving on. G2 voluntary water sharing program and agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. We are going to invite a couple of speakers in via Zoom here. I want to welcome Redora Bigotan, our consulting staff engineer, along with part of our city attorney team, Palmer Hilton and Viviana or Vivi Hagar. They're going to participate in the presentation on this, on this topic. The matter before you is discussion and ultimately a recommendation regarding a voluntary water sharing program and agreement. Staff has been very involved in following an effort by, that's been supported by the state water board to develop an alternative to curtailment. And really what you're going to see tonight is the outcome or work product of that effort. I want to acknowledge Redora, she's been tremendous, tremendously helpful in participating in the Russian River drought response steering committee and reflecting the city's interests and as the, the steering committee developed a draft agreement and program that you're going to receive an overview of tonight. So with that said, I'd like to go ahead and introduce Ms. Bigotan and Redora will walk us through, walk council through a PowerPoint presentation. So with that, Redora, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
She froze. Viviana, can you hear us?
I can hear you just fine.
Great, you're up.
Oh, sorry. Apologies. Okay. It looks like I was on mute and I just wanted to double check if you can see my screen.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lee, it's a member of the board, or city council. Tonight, I will be speaking with you about the voluntary water sharing program and agreement. Under this agenda item, the city council is asked to consider participating in Upper River, Upper Russian River 2022 voluntary water sharing program and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement associated with the program. In tonight's presentation, I will be providing a little bit of background. Recent state emergency regulations due to drought describe the voluntary water sharing program and agreement, share the external factors affecting the program, how the program impacts the city, the schedule for participation, staff recommendation, and then open up for discussion and questions. So first, a little bit of background. The city's water supply is groundwater under direct influence of the Russian River. The city has senior water rights. They are pre-1914 appropriative water rights, some of the most senior in the region with 1884 priority and 1885 priority to Russian River and the Big Sur Creek respectively. These water rights are protected. However, the state water resources control board issued curtailment of diversion from the Russian River to the city on August 2, 2021. It provided an exception which limits the diversion for the city to meet minimum water needs for human health and safety, and that's 104 gallons per capita per day. The curtailment was temporarily suspended and has been suspended since October 29, 2021 due to forecasted precipitation. In response to these recent droughts, the Russian River Drought Response Group Steering Committee formed with the purpose of applying for shortage conditions and drought response and coordinating with the state, with the state water board on drought-related conditions. The goal is to avoid curtailment for users by managing water supply and conserving water. What I show in this slide are the members of that steering committee. The city participated in the committee to engage in regional water conservation and protect the city's senior water rights. The steering committee collaborated to craft the voluntary water sharing program and agreement, which would allow participants to avoid curtailment by voluntarily conserving water. I highlighted the state water board in this slide because they are a participant in the steering committee. And I'd like to express appreciation to state water board staff in addressing participants' comments and the city's comments. The steering committee was truly collaborative and respectful of each other's needs. Unfortunately, the drought continues on to 2022 and the state took emergency, took action on state emergency regulations due to the drought. On March 28, 2022, Governor Newsom signed executive order N 722, which extended the state of emergency. That was followed by the state water board taking action on a number of emergency regulations. On May 10, it adopted emergency curtailment regulations for the Russian River watershed, which would allow the state to limit or cease water diversions from the Russian River. It provides an exception to curtailment for participants of a voluntary water sharing agreement. On May 24, the state water board adopted additional emergency regulations. Under those regulations, the city would implement its water shortage contingency plan at a minimum level two water conservation. Additional water use restrictions were included in that emergency regulation. And yesterday, June 7, the state water board approved the voluntary water sharing agreement that we are sharing with you tonight. The state water board's approval of the agreement would allow the program to be an exemption to the emergency curtailment regulations. So the voluntary water sharing program and agreement has a goal to avoid or delay curtailment of water diversions from the Russian River for those who participate. The hope is to maintain local control of the Russian River watershed through water supply management. This program and agreement doesn't affect the city's existing water rights or water rights priority beyond the limits of the program. Participation is voluntary and participants might, may withdraw, but would be subject to curtailment regulations outside of the program. The voluntary water sharing program and agreement would set required conservation for participants. This is dependent on regional participation and the availability of water supply at users' diversion point. It does recognize priority of water rights. For example, pre-1914 water rights holders such as the city would conserve up to 20%. Those with more junior water rights are asked to conserve more or may even be curtailed. The 20% is based on average May to September 2017 to 2019 water use diversions. The significance of this is that these are dry season demands, the highest demands of the year during non-drought years. So they're considered the most recent normal demands. No one would be asked to conserve more than the minimum water needs for human health and safety, but actual requirements would need to be determined by state water board through an analysis and would be announced after the enrollment period. I'm going to turn it over to legal counsel to discuss the legal framework of this agreement.
Yes, so under the traditional water rights scheme, the city has pre-1914 water rights. And what that means is that in the order, in the order of priority, water users are permitted to use their water right. And when a curtailment occurs, it happens in reverse priority order. So the youngest water right will have to curtail first. And how it works is the younger water right will have to curtail entirely before the senior water right holder is asked to curtail at all. The voluntary water sharing agreement diverts from this framework and instead of having the senior water right holder hold their full water right at any given time until they're curtailed, it asks the pre-1914 water right holder to conserve while juniors are still diverting. So it's a deviation from the actual scheme of water rights. The crux of the issue here is that the pre-1914 water right is only a benefit in this circumstance if the city is not facing curtailment. The state water. So it's a deviation from the actual scheme of water rights. The crux of the issue here is that the pre-1914 water right is only a benefit in this circumstance if the city is not facing curtailment. The state water board has indicated that curtailments are imminent for the entire water basin. So likely, the city wouldn't benefit from pre-1914 water right as they would be curtailed and then they would be under the same restrictions that they've been under for the past year. Instead, the the water sharing program would require the city to curtail up to 20% while the program is in effect. And the other kicker is that the city can withdraw from the agreement at any time. Bibi, do you have anything to add?
No, nothing further from my end.
Rodora, if you want to go ahead and proceed.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? So there are external factors affecting the program. These factors are beyond the control of the state water board and the steering committee. And they may affect the required water conservation and the viability of the program. First, there's the the amount of water that would be shared. The amount of water for sharing will depend on the number of senior water rights holders and overall number of participants. So success of the program depends on regional participation. Additionally, the viability of the program depends on water supply availability. There's water supply from the natural Russian River flows and stored water at Lake Mendocino. But there's also water supply from the releases from the PG&E Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. Under that project, PG&E is required to maintain cold water pool for endangered species such as chinook salmon and steelhead trout. Unfortunately, on May 13, PG&E filed a flow variance request with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. They asked to reduce flows from the normal 75 cubic feet per second to 5 to 25 cubic feet per second. And analysis shows that the program would be viable at 25 cubic feet per second, but not at 5 feet per second. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission have not yet made a decision on that flow variance request. And so that is an unknown. However, the steering committee would like to move forward with the program and adopt, adopt the program in the event that there will be available flows and we would learn from this year. The program's impacts to the cities. The participation in the program provides exemption from curtailment orders. Required conservation would be less than junior water rights holders and even less than the minimum for human health and safety. And the city would be able to manage its water supply and use within its allowable diversion. So the city could manage its water supply and its use internally as appropriate, including the ability to provide new connections or allow for temporary construction meters as long as it stays within the allowable diversion amount. The anticipated 2022 conservation requirement under the voluntary program would be a maximum of 20% based on May to September 2017 to 2019 water diversion. And again, that's dependent on regional participation, water supply availability, and it provides more than the minimum water needs for human health and safety. Initial preliminary analysis shows that to be between 107 to 116 gallons per capita as compared to 104 gallons per capita. So it provides a little bit more outside of the program. Or if the program is not viable, the city would be subject to curtailment order and would be allowed for, to the minimum water needs for human health and safety at 104 gallons per capita per day. The schedule for participating in the program is provided in this slide. It's currently open enrollment and open enrollment will close on June 20. Around June 24, there will be an announcement of initial conservation requirements and participants will know if they want to withdraw from participation and make a decision within 15 days of announcement. In July, the program will commence and the program will terminate when the state water board determines sufficient rainfall that will alleviate the water supply shortage or if the state rescinds the emergency drought proclamation or December 31, 2022, whichever is earliest. Staff recommends to approve the resolution authorizing participation in the voluntary water sharing program and authorizing the city manager to execute a program agreement. And I will end this presentation and open up for discussion and questions. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Rodora. I'll bring to council first. Who would like to start? Councilmember Paula?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments. Rodora, thank you to you and your team. This has been reported to the Public Works Subcommittee several times and Rodora's done a great job of keeping the committee updated on this. It's one of those things where nobody likes to have mandates, but recognizing the situation we're in. Last year, we were in really bad conditions and we had curtailment orders by the state imposed on the city and we were basically helpless to deal with those. I think this is really a win-win for the city. I like the fact, a couple of things I just want to reiterate that we don't jeopardize our senior rights, water rights per 1914. It's really designed 20% of the max using the average of May through September of 2017 to 19. We're not looking at the last year or two where people have really, really cut back. This was back when we were in somewhat of a normal frame. So the 20% is not going to be as painful as, as it may sound. City does have the ability to withdraw from this if it turns out that it's not something that we anticipated. So I really think it is in the city's best interest to move forward with this based on all the hard work that's went into it. So, thank you.
I thank Rodora and the team for always being present and putting forth their best interests to the city. I have been participating on and off of the Russian River drought response meetings and it has been very interesting to hear the exposition by all stakeholders. So thank you very much, Rodora and team. I do support being part of this program.
Yeah, not a lot of questions. This has been a long time in the making and it, it really reflects a regional effort to solve our problems and get together calmly and reasonably and just understand that, you know, this is the situation that we're all in when, you know, one of us in, in the region suffers, we all suffer. So I think it's a great model going forward. I really appreciate how you've explained it, but also the, the, the supporting documents that you supplied to us. It really gives us really solid background. It shows how diverse the stakeholders were and how it's, yeah, it's really, really a, a, a great example of, you know, regional, local stakeholders coming together to be realistic about what our situation is. And we're going to need more of this going forward. So yeah, I definitely support this and hope that we can, we can pass this this evening. But I'm also interested in, you know, what the, the public has to say. So no specific questions, but if anybody like David or any of the participants kind of wanted to give a little bit more of a behind the curtain look at who the, our representatives were in the stakeholder group, that might be helpful. That was not really highlighted in the presentation or in the documentation. So it'd be helpful for, for people to know who, who, who's representing us and, and just how, how inclusive the stakeholder group was.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. And I think one of the slides that Ms. Bigotan presented, you know, identified the list of key stakeholders. And it really is a representative of, of the various groups, including cities and farm groups and organizations all along the Upper Russian River that have been involved in this effort, including the state board. We've been fortunate to be represented by, by, by Rodora, who has a background and expertise in, in, in water matters and serving us as, you know, part of the interim city engineer team that we have through our agreement with, with West Yost. So it's been, it's been particularly valuable to have someone with Rodora's background and experience be able to participate and, and brief both myself as well as our legal team, who is, who's also been involved in closely monitoring the state board processes as this, as this process has unfolded. So it, it's, it's been an iterative process, been a lot of work. But it, it's also, want to acknowledge that they, they, through the process, they have taken into account our city-specific issues and concerns and our, and our legal concerns. As, as Ms. Bigotan presented and as highlighted by our, our city attorney Palmer Hilton, you know, we, we do have senior water rights, so, you know, we, we want to be protective of those. The way I kind of look at this is through the lens of, you know, curtailment or, or do we look at this voluntary drought process that was created by this collaborative work of these stakeholder groups? And as it's presented right now, I think it's, it, it's beneficial for us to participate. And certainly as your city manager, I recommend that we, we do participate and sign on to the, the agreement. I do want to bring, bring forward the, it was noted in, in the presentation that there, there's been this request that's been filed by PG&E for a flow variance and that's one of the tremendous uncertainties that has kind of thrown a monkey wrench in this process. There's actually considerable work going on to address the FERC process, not only by Congressman Huffman, but also Congressman Thompson. I was on a, on a call with Representative Congressman Thompson and they, they recognized, Congressman Thompson's aide, that, that this, the impact that the flow variance requests may have on this process that we've engaged in. And we, we really do view, and I think it's a consensus of the stakeholder group, that PG&E hasn't been particularly collaborative in meeting with the stakeholder group in this process. And, you know, one of the ancillary requests, not including the agenda because it came up, but as part of this effort is to actually file a letter with FERC to address some of our concerns and if, if, you know, council feels, feels comfortable in allowing staff to proceed, to get a letter to address the comments that have been generated by the stakeholder group and also are reflective of our, you know, again, trying to protect our interests in terms of the water with, from the Potter Valley project and their contribution to the Upper Russian River. That would be something that we would, we would proceed with doing and getting that in as FERC evaluates PG&E's request. Because unfortunately, I don't think they've engaged with us as collaboratively as this group has. But it is, it is an example of the regional interests coming together to try to develop an alternative that is trying to work, work as best as we can to address the significant impacts of, of the drought that we're, we're experiencing. So I do, again, just want to reiterate that we, staff does support participation. Want to note that the resolution that's included in your agenda packet does provide for either the city attorney or the city manager to terminate that agreement should we determine that it's not in our interest to do so. So by approving the resolution tonight, of course, it authorizes signing and approving the agreement, but it also authorizes us to terminate that agreement again, should we find that it, it, it's not beneficial to, to the city.
Thank you, David. If no other comments, I'll open to public. Anyone in the audience? No hands on the attendees list? So we'll bring it back to the dais. Any further comments from?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to.
Short comment.
I'd like to introduce the resolution of the city council, City of Cloverdale, authorizing the participation in the Upper Russian River 2022 Voluntary Water Sharing Program and authorizing the city manager to execute the Upper Russian River 2022 Voluntary Water Sharing Agreement.
I will second that. Yes, I actually just wanted to make sure that we thanked West Yost and, you know, everyone on the team as well as David and our staff. This is, you know, really marks a different way of moving forward on our water situation and that is one of partnership and regional cooperation, you know. It's such, it's so important to our regional resiliency and our resiliency for residents and it just really underscores the importance of making sure that our water infrastructure is invested in, is sound and that we're putting tools in the hands of businesses and residents so that they too can, you know, treasure every drop of water that we're able to provide for them. So I'm very happy to see this going forward tonight.
There was a second on that as well, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. Open up to public real quick. See no attendees and no one in the audience with comments. We'll bring it back and go for roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Lance. Start with Councilmember Paula.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter is absent. Mayor Lance?
Aye.
For the record note that the motion passes for zero with one, one, Vice Mayor absent.
All right, moving into subcommittee reports.
Mayor, if I can, just real quickly, I just want to say thank you to the team, Rodora Bigotan and our city attorneys Palmer Hilton and Viviana Hager.
Yes, thank you all for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Have a great night. Okay, the first subcommittee is the Finance, Admin and Police. And Gus is not here. Our next meeting is first Monday of each month, which next meeting was canceled, which was this week. So the next meeting after that is July 4th, which will be canceled. So we'll be either scheduling a, I would like to schedule probably a special somewhere in there.
Okay.
I don't know when, just maybe put it out there for some days.
Staff will coordinate with you, Mayor, and, and the chair on a, setting a date for a special meeting.
I just think that August is too far away without having a meeting for that. Thank you. Planning and Sustainability.
Our next meeting is June 21st at 1:30.
Public Works and Facilities?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting actually is going to be, this is incorrect on the agenda. It's actually the fourth Tuesday, which would be June 28th, not the 26th, and it'd be at 1:30.
Joint City and Fire District?
There's no meeting and that's one of my future agenda items to reevaluate Fire District Subcommittee.
Joint Cities and School?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, our next meeting would do, well, summer recess, so we don't really have it. It was scheduled for July 18th, but I know the superintendent won't be available, so we're going to have to put to be determined after we get in contact with it.
So Councilmember Paula should update. I should probably have told you before.
So, Councilmember Paula, I, I should update. I should probably have told you before. She emailed me this morning and asked to try to schedule a meeting before the end of the month. So, I, I drafted an email and got called out on an emergency at work, and it's sitting on my computer, and it will go out at 7:05 tomorrow morning.
So, it's to be determined?
To be determined, hopefully before July 1st.
Thank you.
Uh, the Homelessness Community Advisory Group, the next meeting is June 14th at 1:30. Council reports, anything verbal?
My, mine's in the packet.
Did she have some good news to share?
I wasn't going to share it, but I could.
Yeah.
Let me pull up, hold on, let me pull up the list.
I, 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 I understand that there was placement of, uh, some individuals.
There was. There was placement of a couple, um, very high-needs individuals in our community. Um, as you know, from that homelessness group, we have about six to seven in our town. And, uh, about a year and a half ago, we established a coalition that focused directly on them and ways to get them help, whether it be mental health, medical, or housing. And I believe it's two of those. Right, Chief?
Correct.
Two of those, uh, recently were housed, and they're pushing for more. So, uh, we've been, now we're up to three, I believe, total out of that group, which is, um, decades of knowing them, very good to have. So, thank you. I wasn't going to say that.
No, but that is something that has to be celebrated, because these have been individuals in true chronic conditions. And, um, I mean, the efforts of, of this collaborative regional approach has really paid off. And, uh, we need to highlight not only that these individuals are in a safer place, but that also collaboration has proven effective. And we need to continue to, to support that and, and to work at that.
And the collaboration is not only from council, it's from law enforcement, it's from medical, it is from Reach for Home and the county.
It's a coalition.
It is a coalition.
And that's essential. Thank you very much.
Uh, one more thing I do want to mention is I've been working on, the same as we did last year, the vegetation management along the river. Uh, it should be starting in the next couple of weeks to finish from where we stopped last year, to go north all the way to McCray Road, and to go south from the First Street Bridge to Alcoast. Uh, we walked it with, uh, the Water Quality Control Board, Fish and Game, the county, county parks, uh, the fire chiefs, e- everyone that you could possibly imagine with a tight name and title was there today. And they are gung ho, ready to go. We're just waiting for the actual drafted order so that everyone can approve it and move forward. But we're expecting within the next couple of weeks, we'll see a lot of people out there working to clean up the vegetation and keep us safe from fires for the summertime.
Do we have, uh, everybody cutting coming up?
No. Um, PG&E will not be there for that.
It got pushed. But there's, but there's a mini one going on.
It, it's not a, I don't think it's-
It's not. It, you can get a tour. But, yeah, because PG&E-
It's an outside tour because you can't see inside, she said.
Well, yeah. They have windows and, and doors at this stage.
Yeah, we can look inside. She said it's pretty dark inside.
With a flashlight, yeah.
Okay, informational reports.
Ma- Mayor, if I can, just real quickly on council reports, and thank you, Mayor, for your, your verbal report. I, I want to, uh, just, uh, share with you a practice that our, our, uh, city clerk is going to implement. Uh, he did send out an email to council, uh, on this, that if he receives your written report, you know, by Tuesday afternoon, he will actually attach that report to the agenda that is published, uh, on our website. So, if you were to go pull our website, uh, web, uh, the agenda off the website right now, you'll, you will find that it lists, uh, the three written reports that were submitted by members of council, Councilmember Paula's, Councilmember Bagby's, as well as Councilmember Cruz. So, if you, if you do have the opportunity to provide a written report, uh, you'll, you'll notice that it will actually be listed on the agenda. So, uh, I think, uh, our city clerk is trying to enhance, uh, transparency, but also to highlight the, the work and the communication that, that all of you, uh, you know, you put a lot of work in your reports, and we want to make sure that if members of the community, um, want to view those reports, that they're going to be available right there on, on the agenda. Um, if they come in later than that, it just may, it may not make it on the agenda. It'll be in the minutes, uh, or included in Granicus, uh, but it just may not be, uh, on the agenda, because it does take a little work to, to, uh, you know, add it and, uh, you know, create the digital file, repost the agenda and so forth. So, I just wanted to share that with you, that our, uh, uh, city clerk is, you know, taking that extra step to, to really publish your reports and make it available for the community to view.
Thank you, David, and thank you, Michael, for, uh, making us better than we were.
Can I just say something?
Please, go ahead.
I, I really am so grateful to the innovations that Michael is introducing, and I, I, especially since, I mean, I, I, I kind of, you know, the council reports are kind of like a prayer. You send them up, but you don't know if anyone's going to actually, um, read them or respond. Um, but what I, one of the things that I do do is I try to put, uh, you know, links to either, like, the S T, S C T A newsletter, or I try to put the, a, like, in my, my council report, I have, uh, the smart press release about their, um, the smart to the Golden Gate Ferry to the Giants game, um, pilot, um, that they're doing in, uh, for two games in, in June, one of which is the Dodgers game. So, you know, um, go Giants, beat L.A. Um, and then I also, you know, include it on Sonoma Clean Power and the, the link to the information on the geothermal opportunities, uh, which I think ultimately is going to be really important for Cloverdale. I'm, I'm going from baseball to geothermal, okay? I'm, I'm bringing it. I'm bringing it. I'm bringing it around. I'm bringing it around. I'm not waving a flag. I'm bringing it around. So, um, so on the ge- so, so it has information on things that are pertinent to us regionally. So, you know, obviously, you know, council people, council members want to keep up to date on, you know, just what's going on at the, the regional level. I try to, you know, include those links. And so, then any of the mem- and members of the public who want to know what's going on in, um, in some of those, um, some of those regional boards. I'm just trying to do quick links so that you can, you know, kind of expand either your range of knowledge of what we actually are involved in, um, as a city. So, I'd urge you to definitely read my, um, council report, but, but also, um, yeah, go to the, go to the links in there, since it will kind of explain, you know, what some of the regional boards that Cloverdale is participating in, um, are up to.
There you go.
Well, you know, that's a very good idea, to go ahead and put the-
Shameless plug.
The, the, the link, you know, of, of our committees and our boards that we're in. Uh, I had done so in the past, but I think it's time to put it back on. So, thank you.
Homework, here you go.
Legislative reports, letters of support or opposition, anything, David?
Uh, none, none. Well, uh, actually, we, we have received a request, uh, from, from Councilmember Bagby. I don't know, Councilmember Bagby, if you want to-
Yeah, it's, it's, it's from, yeah, it's from Senator Maguire's office. He would just like, there's, he has followed-up, um, example letter on the language, um, commenting on the future decision by the Service Transportation Board, and he's hoping to get, um, a letter of support, um, from the City of Cloverdale. So, I think I've made sure to flag it, forward it to David so that we can get that on the agenda and get a, get a letter out on that. And it's consistent with previously stated policies, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, going back to letters of support, uh, usually, I know, uh, Councilmember Bagby's our legislative representative with the league, I believe, at the Redwood Empire. We used to have, where we passed, you know, uh, kind of like a, a policy, and it's, we should have examples of it that would give you the authority within the guidelines to, on our behalf, to sign them. So, these letters oftentimes are timely. We don't have time to get them back to the agenda, get them out, talk about them. And so, we had a policy, and I, I found that very helpful, because I would be able to kick out a letter, uh, within the day or two days, knowing it's one of the areas that we've talked about, knowing what the council's policy was on that. So, I, I would really encourage that we, we revisit that, get that on the agenda, giving the authority for our legislative rep, because they're there, they're hearing it from the league, all the legal analysis, and they know where we're at, and they can just put those letters out in a timely manner. So, thank you.
I think that functionally, just what's been happening in, I go to the Sonoma County group, and then we kind of, as a group there, um, you know, give Nancy, our, our, our representative through the league, um, we kind of give her that direction. And then I'm also on the legislative committee for the Redwood Division, and Sarah is kind of takes the lead on that. So, I think between that, there, there hasn't really been anything that has kind of, there haven't been a lot of things that have popped up that are maybe major concerns for Cloverdale that are separate from what they're doing. Um, but it would be nice to have that if there were an atrocious or a fantastic piece of legislation that we either want to support or-
Especially when it involves potentially money-
Yeah.
-to the city, or trying to put a state mandate on a city where we want to take an opposition without funding. So, it's important, I think, that we have that.
And CalStetis is, 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 um, still, um, they're the, the first line of defense on, um, unfunded mandates, as, as you know, so from previous experience. So, um, yeah, in, I think the last two years have been just COVID weird, um, because it's just been, been, legislation has been focused on that. And I think we've seen in this legislative, this legislative year, we're kind of starting to, um, you know, get, get some new legislation. But the biggest issue to me is that, um, is that budget surplus. And I think that that's where, you know, if we're going to speak out, that's where we really, um, need to, to focus our efforts, because we just sort of need to, you know, illustrate what the mandates have done to us, the, the mandated, the money that state does owe us, but then also where we are, you know, post redevelopment on so many of the resiliency and infrastructure issues that redevelopment was supposed to help us with. And so, if we can, you know, communicate with that clearly and get a, a letter out on that, I think that's something that, um, we should move on, because we're certainly not the only city in that position.
I look forward to seeing David's email to get our approval and move it forward. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. City manager, report?
Mayor, no, no, no reports from the city manager.
The attorney?
Um, just quickly, we are still following the two bills that are moving through the legislature regarding, um, uh, Zoom meetings, regarding, uh, meetings with, uh, that are able to tell, for folks to teleconference. Now, this, this technology is kind of here to stay. I think the legislature's looking at, at what, what works best. There are two different bills that are starting to be consolidated, um, so it'll be interesting to see what requirements will stay. Um, it is just a note, it's, it's great that the technology is working better, the cameras and everything here. So, I guess we're getting, we're getting ready for, for the new legislation to see what it says and what the options are for the, the city. Also, um, I, I did, uh, sorry, Councilmember Bagby, I did start to kind of, you know, when I heard go Giants and the Dodgers.
Uh-oh.
The council has been great to let me on, leave me as a council, as a, as a, your, your-
I know you're a Dodger fan. I, I-
As your city attorney.
-ever look at most of the time.
But I'll be on the train. I'll, I'll be on the train with you.
That sounds great.
I'm just glad to hear that this is moving past the emergency order into, uh, legislation where it should be. Okay, status updates, impact of water supply? There's been some good news.
Mayor, no, no, no further updates after our presentation this evening.
And the COVID-19, no further updates or further updates? Great, thank you. Uh, Council Director on Future Agenda Items, please, go ahead.
Yes, um, I would like for us to request from the Public Works Subcommittee to see if there could be some discussion about restriction on lawns and promoting, uh, more, um, California-friendly landscaping.
So, you, are, is that referred to the Public Works Subcommittee? Is that where you want to go?
Yeah, I think that's where it would go. And I also would like for the admin to, as a suggestion, to reevaluate Fire District Subcommittee, because in the two years that have been related to it, we've never met. There's always a reason to cancel or a re- uh, you know, a meeting with so-and-so, and a report has been made and so on. So, uh, you know, I've been ready and available, but it's always been that. So, you know, I understand that the chief and, uh, and, and the city manager and the fire chief, um, talk frequently. So, I, I don't think that there's a need for that Subcommittee at this stage of game.
Maybe we merge it with the police, with the Finance, Admin, Police and Fire.
If you could get those people to come to anything.
Well, then they'd have their platform to speak if needed.
So, uh, it's something to discuss, perhaps. Um, and then I would also like to see if it's possible to either discuss, send to a Subcommittee, that we start considering land acknowledgement and improving tribal relations. Because the tribes in Sonoma County have become quite, um, a stakeholder when it comes to water use, when it comes to, uh, social engagement and contribution to many projects. And we do have the Cloverdale Rancheria, and uh, I think the last met I met, the last time I met with them was probably about, right before COVID. And, and I think it's important that we do improve our relations with, uh, the different tribal communities.
I have a couple, if you guys don't mind. Uh, I would like to, um, Melanie's idea of the policy for legal representation, for, I think that we should discuss that somewhere and bring that forward, because I think that's a great idea. Where the, I don't know if it's the, the legislative representative-
Oh.
-have authority over certain things. I think that's a good idea.
There's a, we, we do have an example. It's been, we adopted it many times over the past several years.
Well, I, I think the first step for that, for, just to bring things up to date, and I think this has been mentioned at, you know, some meetings too, is that we, we kind of need to have a written legislative platform. That's a really clear, you know, that gives really clear guide, guide rails to whoever's in that position that say that this is, you know, the, these are our central core values, these are our central areas of interest that are, you know, maybe obvious because it's city government, or maybe it's not. Maybe it's something that's important to the, to the community, and it's a, it's a social issue, or, um, you, you know, just, it's, it could be, it could be anything. We probably want to have a brainstorming session and involve the community and just feel like, you know, what are our core community values and things that, you know, we, we want to, um, lobby for, um, you know, if it comes up legislatively. And some of them are obvious, some of them aren't. Uh, but I think the first important step is really having that legislative platform that you, that you move from. And then if the issue that comes up that's maybe, you know, maybe it's like a little gray area, or maybe it's something that we hadn't considered before, then that's the kind of thing that, you know, you do need to kind of bring that before the council, or you, you know, my first call is to David and say, what do you, you know, hey, what do you think about this? Am I way out in left field, or am I right, you know, am I, am I down the center of the plate? So, that's a, and he's a, you know, great sounding board for stuff like that. So, um, you know, that's just how I would feel comfortable proceeding, so that we all know whoever is doing that job is, you know, has the, has the, the values and the, um, the platform that we've, we've discussed in mind when you're, when you're advocating.
And that's what I've seen in the past as well, is it was the president or whoever was in charge at the time, plus the manager, supervisor of that group, the admin person, worked together to make sure it fit the values of, because David knows how we all think, and he's that go-to middleman, and I think it's a great idea. Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, I'm also representing Cloverdale when it comes to, uh, the Redwood Empire Division and Community Services Legislation Committee. And actually, we meet tomorrow morning. So-
I can meet tomorrow morning, too. Government's transparency and labor relations, it never ends, so.
Yeah. So, it would, it, that, that guideline, um, that set of guidelines will be very helpful to whomever is in, uh, representing Cloverdale when it comes to community relations also, community services. Because I have been advocating for internet access. Um, I have been advocating for, uh, making sure that there is transportation, uh, consideration and language access in the different communities. But there are other things that the council has not shared openly, and perhaps is a set of guidelines that is, uh, very important, to make sure that when we're representing the city and the area, that we are speaking intelligently about what the council and the community needs are. Oh, and by the way, excuse me, because my senior moments today have been kind of happening too often. I didn't write this down, but, uh, another future item, uh, is, um, internet access for Kings Valley area. And I think I mentioned it to Chair Bagby for our next meeting. Uh, and, uh-
Did we get it on our agenda for Planning and Sustainability?
I, I'm hoping that we did. So, so that's something that's very important, because we have a, a segment of our community that is not getting appropriate access to internet.
So, it's good to hear that you already got it on the agenda. Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Uh, the next thing, the, uh-
The next thing, the level of our conservation for water, I'd like to reevaluate. I don't know if we have to do that, or if you can bring us something, how that works, David, but I think that we're at a high level that is probably not correct for where we are with water conservation at this point.
Could that be integrated with that request on restricting law and promoting local landscaping?
I don't think so. I think that we have to, as a council, vote to lower and raise the level of conservation. Yeah, and so I think that because it's, it was set very high, and I think that we're probably out of the legal realm at this point. And then the next thing is, I want to do an in-depth breakdown of the budget for the Water Department, and I would like to do it here, so that it's very transparent to the public when we get ARPA funds and we are asked as to why we're still having higher bills and things like that. I'd like to make it very clear and shown, and for my own knowledge, to understand how it works and why we are where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree. I, I would like to just, you know, I've received two different emails, and I shared them with the city manager. People are concerned about the approved water rates that are going in, and there's a misunderstanding, I think. The percentage came out as 22%, where really it's part of that sewer, part of that's water, two separate enterprises. So, there's a misunderstanding in that regard. But also, I think there's some confusion, because we are very fortunate. We received that $3 million, a little bit over $3 million grant to do some CIP projects within the water. And we also have ARPA funds, that not all of that's earmarked for water, but a good portion of it is. So, there's some confusion whether that money is still needed or not, the raises, whether we can lower and not, not raise the water rates. And I think it's important that, in the spirit of transparency, that the city manager and staff put together a little presentation for the public to kind of lay out what generated the need for the raise of water rates and sewer rates, as well as how the grant, can it offset it, or if it can't, why, so people understand, as well as the ARPA funds. And, and the city manager did a nice correspondence to a community member that really laid out and articulated very well a lot of these questions. So, I think it's really going to be important, just in the spirit of transparency, because a lot of other people have those questions, just to give a presentation so we can have a dialogue about that. Thank you.
And David, if you don't mind, I don't know if it would add more or not, but because there's such a big deficiency or, or loss in the Water Department, in our budget, wanting to have a balanced budget, we really need to figure that out. And so, I would like, that's another part of it. It's not just for the transparency of the community. It is for my own knowledge, so we can figure out how to solve that problem.
Understood, Mayor. I, I think we may want to break that up into kind of manageable pieces. One, bring it, bring it back as a kind of a presentation and update on, on, on water rates, kind of a, an overview, so that we bring it back to council. But to do the more deeper dive on the budget, where we can look at, you know, operational expenses, revenues, and do that at the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee.
That's totally fine.
And it might be an exercise that we, we utilize for, for our other funds, our general fund, our enterprise fund, where we can, we can do a little bit more, a deeper dive. I, I know we've had discussions about the, for example, the landscape lighting and assessment district budgets, and, and look at those, and, and start to strategize so that when we, we come forward next year with the annual report, we can incorporate some of the, some of the thinking that might be developed out of that, out of that review process. So, I, I think I've heard, I've heard a lot in terms of council direction. I just want to kind of touch, touch base and make sure I'm, I'm tracking with council. Of course, legislative platform, I think, starting with, starting that with the draft at the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee, and then ultimately bringing that back to council as soon as possible for, for consideration. There was the request from Councilmember Cruz on the kind of restriction of lawns and friendly landscaping. My recommendation would be, we, we do have what are called the Russian River Friendly Guidelines for, for landscaping, it's, and some of that's embedded in your planning requirements. So, you may want to, that specific topic, you may want to put on the pla, the next Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee, which is coming up fairly quickly. So, if you're okay with that, I'll, I'll put that there. The internet access likewise, for Kings Valley, put that on the planning. If you'd like that as Planning and Sustainability. And so, the water conservation, we are currently at a stage four, and I think it is appropriate, based on our urban water management plan, to look at modifying the stages. If council's okay, we'll take a look at that and determine whether we just bring that back either directly to council, or we, we bring it to Subcommittee for Initial Review and then, and then, and then bring it back. I think there may be some interest and urgency on that, but I'll, I'll work with our, our city attorney team, our water team, and figure out what's the best means of bringing, bringing that back, because I do think there's some need for clarification around that policy, just as it relates to particularly the action that you took tonight on the voluntary drought agreement and, and the conservation requirements that pertain there, and how that relates to your urban water management plan, especially in light of raising, you know, the water rate increases and how the, the water shortage contingency plan addresses the, the stage four water emergency. So, we'll, we'll coordinate with our city attorney's team and determine how best to bring that back. We do, just for note, we do have a, a really packed agenda for your next meeting. So, we'll, some of these items, I think, of course, we'll go to Subcommittee, but other items may be targeting, bringing back in, in July. And, and something that we may want to consider, often, not always, council does, council cancel the first meeting in July, but that's, that's your direction, council and mayor. If, if that's something you wanted, you'd like to do now. I know it tends to be a time of, that council members are taking vacations, and it falls around the 4th of July, but, you know, we'll seek your direction as to whether you want us, would like us to consider canceling that meet, that first meeting in July.
So, do we have you ask the council via email if they're going to be even available before we try to cancel, or?
Yeah, that sounds good.
With nothing else, our next meeting is scheduled, actually, we have a special meeting scheduled for Friday at 9:00 AM, and then our next regular city council meeting is June 22nd. And with that, our meeting is adjourned at 7:58.